Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council Regular Meeting. Today is April 11th. It is now 8:17 PM. Call the meeting to order. Let's have a flagellum.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on its own, in its full power.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for Joe Perdulo's wife Christina, who passed away last month. Thank you. Madam Clerk, we have a roll call, please.
Mayor Crankack?
Here.
Counselperson Zavarska?
Where's it?
E. Park, Sergeant O., here.
Here.
And Park?
Here.
For our attorney?
Present.
Superintendent Public Works?
Here.
Thank you. I want to thank anyone who donated food this evening for the Office of Concerned Food Pantry in Englewood. There's a box out in the foyer. It's not too late if you want to donate later or tomorrow morning, they'll pick it up mid-morning, I believe. So, we're doing this every month as a community charity service project. There's a lot of working for people in Bergen County and in Englewood especially. So, thank you, everyone, who's brought non-perishable food items. Can I have the open meeting?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion and typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Thank you. Do you have any proclamations? So, next on our agenda are proclamations. I'm going to read the proclamation for Mr. Ovid DiFiore. It's a great story. We're celebrating his 100th birthday this month. Whereas the mayor and council of the borough of Englewood Cliffs wish to honor and acknowledge the 100th birthday of our longtime resident, Mr. Ovid DiFiore. And whereas Mr. DiFiore was born in the Bronx, New York, on April 20th, 1918. He is the third oldest of five children and the first to reach 100 years of age. And whereas Mr. DiFiore graduated in 1935 from the prestigious Regis High School in New York City. And whereas Mr. DiFiore worked in the film industry from 1936 through 1949 as a commercial and fashion photographer. And whereas Mr. DiFiore was a signal corps photographer during a tour in Australia, New Guinea, and the Philippines while serving in the United States Army from September 30th, 1941, through October 1st, 1945. And whereas Mr. DiFiore has traveled to over 35 European countries and also recently visited Hong Kong. And whereas Mr. Ovid DiFiore and his late wife, May Nikki, May Lauricella, were married on October 14th, 1951. And in 1959, they moved to Englewood Cliffs, their home along with their children, Ann and Jerry. And whereas Mr. DiFiore takes great pride in his three grandchildren, Austin, Danielle, and Ian. He enjoys spending quality time with them and will be attending his granddaughter's wedding in April 2019. And whereas it is an honor to acknowledge Ovid DiFiore's 100th birthday by documenting this impressive occasion. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Borough of Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council express their sincere congratulations and best wishes to Mr. Ovid DiFiore. And be it further resolved that the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council, while honoring Mr. Ovid DiFiore, also wish him and his entire family good health and happiness for many years to come. And our Borough Clerk is going to read our Arbor Day proclamation. Thank you.
Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Whereas 2018 is the 146th anniversary of the holiday and the Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees reduce erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a resource of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, Mayor Mario Crankack, Mayor of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs, do hereby proclaim April 27, 2018, as the 146th anniversary celebration of Arbor Day. In the Borough of Englewood Cliffs, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day to support efforts to protect our trees, woodlands, and further, the mayor urges all citizens to plant trees to glint in the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Thank you. And there's one more proclamation. It's for the Armenian Genocide Commemoration for 2018. And it reads as follows. Whereas since 1915, April 24th of each year, has been imprinted in the memory of the Armenian people worldwide, for it was then that the mass genocide of the Armenian people began in the Ottoman Turkish Empire, the first such genocide in the 20th century. And 2018 marks the 103rd anniversary of the historic tragedy. And whereas Armenian families were uprooted from their ancestral homeland, brutally exposed to all kinds of indignities, with hundreds of thousands slain, resulting in more than half of the Armenian people killed. And whereas recognition of the 103rd anniversary of this genocide is crucial to guarding against the repetition of future genocide and educating people about the atrocities connected to these horrific events. And whereas Armenian Americans have greatly enriched our society through their leadership in business, agriculture, academia, government, and the arts. And whereas our thoughts offered in memory of the Armenian martyrs of 1915 will serve to remind governments of the world that persecution, torture, and killing must cease forever. Now, I, Mario M. Crankack, Mayor of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs, do hereby proclaim April 24th, 2018, and every April 24th, as Armenian genocide commemoration in the Borough of Englewood Cliffs. Okay, next on our agenda is correspondence. We received correspondence from Scott Muira. He's a captain of the Englewood Cliffs Police Department. The first was a complaint for improper use of police equipment event to cause public harm, official misconduct. The second was complaint violation of Englewood Cliffs Police Department electronic social messaging policy. The third was a complaint of improper use of the Englewood Cliffs Police Department email system by the police chief. We all received these on March 23rd, 2018, from Officer Muira. The chief is also aware of that, and I understand because the newspaper had called me immediately because they also got a copy of this and ran an article. This is just a snippet of what I have to deal with as your mayor when it comes to certain activities in this town. And so, what I decided to do was, you know, just in an effort of transparency, what we'll do is I will leave three piles on the table here at the end of the meeting. If anyone wants a copy of the actual emails with attachments, you can take them. And that'll probably relieve the Oprah request for our clerk as well, okay? And they're all being looked into by the proper authorities. Could I have a motion to open to the public, please?
Don't move.
Go in favor.
Aye.
Okay, if there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please raise your hand. Wait for me to recognize you. Come to the microphone. We're going to have it here. You can sit down and relax, and then just state your name and address.
I have a question, Mary. Can the mayor just disseminate emails on his own without any Oprah requests?
There was an email to make, and I haven't recognized you because we're not doing that right now.
Well, but I don't want to get the borough in trouble.
Anybody wishing to be heard, please raise your hand. Yes.
He says, "Disseminate an email."
Heidi Skolnick, 10 Sanford Drive.
Yeah, is there IA on that?
I need to apologize for last time because I spoke out of turn once it was closed.
I'm sorry. Can you use the microphone because it's not... Mark?
I thought we could just sit down and relax.
The mayor switched it. No convo.
Please.
Grab one of the long ones. Yeah. One that works.
Yeah, that would actually hear you.
Okay, can you start again?
Heidi Skolnick, 10 Sanford Drive. So, first I need to apologize because last time I spoke out of turn once it was closed. But in anticipation of that, I want to say that I find it... I want to hear every one of you. You all have ideas, and if you all have the same idea, you would be redundant. So, it's important for this, for us to listen to each other, and I find it incredibly offensive when anyone is shut down. I don't sit here as a member of this community to have my fellow community members and certainly those who are giving of their time to sit up on this panel be shut down. And so, I respectfully request of you each to let each other talk fully. And, you know, just if you're sitting up there like just now, Ellen Park has something to say, whether she is up there or out here, I want to hear what she has to say. It's important to me to weigh in balance.
Can they make this louder? I can't hear.
She's got to talk into the microphone better.
I don't like to hear what she has to say.
She needs to speak into the microphone better.
So, anyway, I got her. You get my point.
Just due respect for everybody here. We adopted Robert's Rules of Order as our rules governing our meetings, and that requires council people and in the public to do things in a certain fashion. And I'll be more sensitive to what you're saying, but they also need to follow the rules as well.
Well, from where I sit, it seems like they're not followed equally all times. And so, you know...
All right. Like what Ellen just did was out of order, so she wasn't recognized.
Okay, but there's a certain generosity that you can allow, or you can then recognize her and allow her to speak.
Okay, understood.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes, sir.
Good evening. David Hill, Mont Bel, New Jersey, employee of Englewood Cliffs. I'd just like to talk about ordinance 1806, the new policy for requirements for police chiefs, specifically the degree requirement.
But, just one second. 1806 is being tabled. We have a replacement now that we have a first reading on, and we revised that provision.
You revised the veterans?
Yeah, so it's four years college or four years military service with an honorable discharge.
Okay, so, what I'd like to further talk about is current employees who were hired before this was a requirement and now may be in their 16th, 17th, 18th year. I mean, it would be almost impossible to go back and get a degree. Who are there currently in leadership positions, and they're highly qualified. To discredit them just because they don't have a degree or a veteran, I think is a mistake. While having a degree or being a veteran may be preferred, and that would be the language that I'd like to see in there. Why would you not have somebody throw their hat in the ring for a position then they might be highly qualified for?
It's in there.
And if all things being equal, that degree or being a veteran puts somebody over the top, it puts them over the top.
It's in there now, and I'm highly confident that it will pass.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. It's four years of college or four years of military. It's or.
Yeah.
It's or.
Yeah.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
Okay. David, 165 Charlotte Place. I have a few things. I'll just go in order. Number one, litter and fines in town. You drive around town, there's a lot of litter on Hudson Terrace, pretty much all over the place. And I was wondering who is in charge of fines in this town and littering fines?
We have a property maintenance official who's been giving out violations and also separately, I have several clients expressed an issue with all the commercial to residential buffer zones not having been maintained. And the property owners, the commercial property owners have started spring cleaning, and hopefully they'll get all the trash that we see as we drive by out. And you see it more, obviously, in the winter when there's no leaf coverage, but I still want it cleaned out. So, we're really pushing on that, and I agree with you.
I would highly recommend raising the litter, littering fines in town and putting signs at the major arteries entering town that Englewood Cliffs prides itself on being the cleanest community in the state. And if anyone is caught littering, it'll be whatever, $1,000 or an automatic fine. I think that would be served to discourage people, and it would also be very good for the town because the town would be standing for something, standing for a clean environment, keeping plastics out of the environment. So, I would highly recommend tightening up on that and raising the fines and putting up signs for that, saying that Englewood Cliffs, delivering a message to people driving through town. The B3 zone. I spoke to one council person, council person who, at the Board of Education meeting, there was an informal conversation. I would encourage the council to consider reaching out to the problem properties that we perceive as problems. Reaching out and speaking with the owner of the property and coming up with some kind of solution. I mean, we could find them, and... But I think it would be a good thing to go on a fact-finding mission, and let's try to work with that person in solving that rather than having, paying a whole bunch of money to mazer and reclassifying that area. I think it would be a lot more effective. If that fails, then go to Plan B, but work with the people that are owning that property. I would also recommend planning ahead. LG is going to be completing their building at some point. Is there a committee, or is, are there certain people that are going to be working with that company as they move in on the council? Or is there some sort of committee that would be in charge of helping to welcome the influx of employees in town? Would it not be a good idea to do that? So, there'd be an open communication with the company in case there's increased traffic on side streets, in case there are any kind of other issues that might be coming up. So, I would, I would highly recommend that we have some sort of committee. And furthermore, I would recommend that we have some kind of public relations committee that would work with all companies on 9W, that all companies...
That must be different.
We have, now who's in charge of that?
That would be Chamber of Commerce, I believe.
Okay, Mark.
I think it's more than I that are on.
Okay.
And we do each, we do.
I think that should be regularly and somehow publicized municipally on the website.
I have, just so you know, I have regular communications and meetings with the senior executives of LG regarding their project, and whenever there's an issue, they call me.
Okay.
And we resolve it as best as we can to our mutual satisfaction. And it's worked really well for the last two years, and I think they're making real good progress now.
Excellent. The Recreation Department, there were a lot of residents and parents specifically that were complaining about the scoreboard in the lower gym at the school. And it seems like the Recreation Department is the only one that was addressed. That's very good. I'm hoping that we have a new scoreboard up there soon.
I've already let Ms. Brower know.
Excellent.
I asked the council. It was unanimous. We put that, they gave me three quotes. I took, they need two, so we put that into the capital budget, and I will update her as the process.
Okay. Can I ask how much was spent on that?
We didn't spend it yet, so I can't say it because you have to take three quotes. So, until then, yeah.
One of the other things in town that I think is missing, we have a park in the northern part of town, a children's park. We have a children's park in the southern part of town, and they're both, I think, fairly good. I'd like to see the feasibility, or at least a study or something, of a park in the center part of town in the area of the upper school. I think it would be an excellent facility for parents and for children to have that opportunity. I had made a recommendation at one point. There's some beautiful stones in the back of the field. I don't know if they're, who owns that land. There's a couple of empty lots off of Charlotte going down the hill a little bit. So, if those, if we could look into an additional park in town, I think it would be an excellent thing. And anything to make it more child-friendly, this town. I'm also very pleased that the, there was a ruling to, at least, at the very least, delay the safety, what is it, the safety?
Public safety.
Public, public safety, safety director. I believe it's a completely unnecessary position, and that money, that fund, those funds could be allocated to hiring possibly an expert that could replace in a way mazer and tell us what to do on the fields, how to keep the fields, possibly an in-house repair of the fields, et cetera, et cetera. I think it's redundant. I think it's, it's a grab to get control on the police department, which I know has been a frustration from some. I believe that if you let people do their work and encourage and enable them, they appreciate it and will do the best job and will respect you as a leader and not as someone who's micromanaging. I think anyone appreciates that. And I would hope that our present police chief would get the support of this council, the entire council. I think he's served for a long time, has done a wonderful job, and I do believe that when the career comes to an end, it's owed to a person just out of humanity, a person-to-person humanity. We all have hearts that beat, and I think that if someone's served the town for a long time, they deserve the respect and not to be undercut. I agree with Officer Hill. I think that you should certainly consider dropping those requirements and opening it up to people that are presently on the force. After all, they've served on the force for a long while, and they've had the experience, probably similar experience to what they have, would have had from college. They've had on-the-job experience on, on the ground, and they know the town. And if you cast a larger net, you'll make a better decision. The last thing I'd like to say is if someone makes a mistake or makes a wrong judgment, I think it's specifically the planning board. The planning board made a bad decision. And I think what bothers me the most, and if I were the head of the planning board, I probably would have made the same bad decision. But what really bothers me is that nobody apologizes. We all have hearts. We all are forgiving. And if there was an apology saying, "We screwed up, I'm going to do all I can to remedy the situation," that was not heard. I think it's arrogant, and I think that, that's not a good example. Thank you very much for your time.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else? Mr. Maranous, is your hand up?
Did you see that?
I thought your hand went up. There it goes. Yeah, whose hand is that?
Mine.
Come on up.
First, I want to comment about Ovid's 100th year birthday. Ovid is a delightful man, and I'm sure most of us are just thrilled that we can congratulate him on this celebration. However, I'd like to know how the mayor and council, where they get their lists of people who are turning 100. Mrs. Fair is about to become 100 years old on Friday. She is a member of the senior citizens, so Mrs. O'Shea, if she is the person who gives you those lists, should be giving them. I don't know where they come from. Excuse me. I don't, I'm not responsible for submitting information. Somebody submits the information.
Our Borough Clerk will see your question for you.
If, you're welcome. If someone knows a resident in town that's going to turn 100, they can contact us, and we will certainly put together resolution, proclamation. In response to Ovid, he happens to be my neighbor.
Ovid is great.
And I asked the mayor, as a favor to me, if he would write a proclamation. I got him the information, and the mayor addressed it. And we did the same thing last month with another young lady that turned 100.
Yes.
Carol got me the information, and we wrote it.
I am thrilled that we'd honor people in that manner. I think it's totally appropriate for the mayor and council to commemorate it. But I think the responsibility, perhaps should be with our Senior Citizens Center, which has lists of many of our aged or long-term residents, to supply that. We get birth, I'm a member of the senior citizens. We get birthday announcements each month with our newsletter. And certainly, a copy of that should be forwarded to the council when you have as significant a birthday as 100 years old, which I hope each of us will someday realize, it should be commemorated. But it should be commemorated for all, and there should be a central repository responsible for giving that information, not individuals. It's my only comment.
So, thank you for alerting us. We'll be sure to celebrate that birthday as well, Mrs. Fair's.
I'm just commenting, there may be others.
If anyone else has anybody else that they want to mention to me, I'll be happy to honor them.
I think Mrs. O'Shea and the senior citizen should be given that responsibility on behalf... It shouldn't be the responsibility of individual residents to alert the mayor and council.
Hold on a minute. Yes, go ahead.
Mrs. Fair's first name is?
I don't know.
I call her Mrs. Fair.
Point of order. First of all, mayor, just so that we know, I mean, we hear Ms. Geiger's opinion, we'll take that under consideration. I think we need to understand there are seniors that do not want to be publicized. I specifically know of one that I asked, they did not want, they thanked me and said, "No, thank you." And that's their right also, so I don't think it's an automatic, we hear you, but to infer that the seniors of somebody else is doing something wrong...
I didn't say that, Mrs. Morrow. I very, no, we didn't. I think it was very clear that I asked...
Okay, all right. Keep it happy.
Excuse me. Let's all keep it happy. But I think that the appropriate thing for this council to do is to set up a procedure wherein the Senior Citizens Center, which receives money from the borough, be responsible, perhaps for contacting those people who are 100, who are on, and asking them if that is the concern. But certainly, they should be responsible for telling the mayor and council that we have such a wonderful occasion to celebrate.
We agree with you. We'll coordinate that with Mrs. O'Shea.
Thank you. Okay, next. I want to thank the Bergen Record. I read an article, I guess it was called Zombie Ward Ahead Amongst... I read an article, I guess it was called "Zombie Ward Ahead Amongst Other Things." And in it, I learned that Scott Mura is still on our payroll. While you, Mr. Mayor, seem to worry about overtime and micromanaging the police department, requiring the police chief to call you personally for overtime approval before money is spent, you seem to turn a blind eye, as far as the community is concerned, to an officer in our police department who has not worked a single day on-site since April of 2016 and who continues to cost our borough hundreds of thousands of dollars and who I now believe is in violation of the settlement agreement which you all approved. Some history. At the same meeting which Chief Chiaffi was suspended in 2016, Lieutenant Mura was approved for a 180-day sick leave with full pay pursuant to the Jerry Frank ordinance. His full pay at the time was almost $175,000 plus benefits. This payment complied with our ordinances, and we are still awaiting a review of the options to that ordinance, which might limit the borough's official financial exposure in the future. Yet my concern is not with the Jerry Frank ordinance today. It's with what happened after the 180 days had passed and Lieutenant Mura did not return to work. Instead of stipulating that Mura use his accumulated vacation and sick days in anticipation of his retirement, the settlement agreement as drawn up by our borough attorney simply states, quote, "The plaintiff shall be entitled to receive retirement emoluments for accumulated time. At no time did the borough attorney apprise the public or the council in public session how much money was involved. When Mrs. Rizzuto informed the council of the parameters for negotiation of the settlement agreement and sought their approval of that, it was her duty and obligation to tell them the full cost of the settlement she was negotiating on their behalf. Why didn't she tell them and us that these emoluments for the accumulated time totaled an additional $300,000? On February 16th, the Superior Court Judge Christine Farrington ordered the borough to pay Captain Mura his captain's base salary, someplace between $150,000 and $200,000 a year, retroactive to the date of the settlement on July 12th, until, until the state approves his application for involuntary disability retirement. Does anybody have any idea how long it will take until the state will act? How much will we pay him for the period between October 12th and October 1st that is not recoverable? How much more money will we now have to front, we as taxpayers, for him? What is our financial liability if he is not successful in obtaining the individual, the involuntary disability retirement? Judge Farrington stated in her opinion, quote, "Beginning as of the date of the governing body's approval of this written agreement, the plaintiff shall receive captain's base salary until," underscored, "the plaintiff's effective approved retirement date," unquote. Approved retirement, the judge went on to say, "Clearly means when the October 1 date is approved by the division. Any other interpretation makes no sense," unquote. She goes on to say that if the borough meant anything else, it should have been written into the settlement agreement. It was not. How could the borough attorney craft a settlement agreement that was silent on such important financial issues and is misleading and wrong as to the borough's intent as she presented it to the council? Further, we're also responsible now for another $17,000 in his attorney legal fees. Why did it happen? Mura, in his sworn statement to the court, his sworn certification stated, quote, "At the settlement conference, the mayor and the citytown agreed that I would receive salary until approved by the pension board." He states that, in quote, "In the settlement conference where the terms were agreed, Mayor Kranjak was present." He then went on to state, quote, "The mayor confirmed that it was his understanding that my salary was to continue until the pension board approved my retirement. The mayor said he would look into this and never called me back." Now, this lapse was definitely not incorporated into the settlement agreement. And now, in addition, Mr. Mura, Captain Mura, appears to be violating the non-disparagement clause of the settlement agreement. You, Mayor Kranjak, sent a townwide email designed to embarrass the police chief based on various assertions of the Mura letter to you, which found its way into the Bergen Record. The disparagement clause on page 10 of the settlement agreement says, quote, "In a whole section devoted to non-disparagement, the parties and the defendant Chiaffi agree not to make any disparaging remarks about any other party. The parties acknowledge that the borough cannot limit the speech of other employees who are not named defendants." Well, Mr. Mura is a named defendant in this. He is a party to the settlement agreement. He is a party to the settlement agreement, and he has clearly disparaged his fellow officers. I want to know as a resident what the borough is going to do about this violation and about the egregious errors in the settlement agreement that cost us money. Thank you.
Well, thank you. That sounded like it came right out of the chief's mouth, so appreciate it. So here, let me tell you everything. Mrs. Geiger is entitled to her misunderstood facts and misunderstood opinions and wrong opinions. As mayor, I, please, please be seated. I, as mayor, I inherited a lot of financial contractual obligations of this town that I just don't agree with. They're not market. We have to live with them, though. They're contractual obligations. I don't agree with them. I've made it publicly known. Mura is one of them, okay? I mean, that's, that's just the way it is. He's, he's retiring, and hopefully going forward, when we have contract renewals, we will be able to negotiate, negotiate away some of the things that we don't like, that are not market. And I, I see the PBI standing back there shaking their heads. We're going to work together, guys. We did today also. We met today. You know, so I look forward to working with them, but I want things to be fair. It's a balancing act up here, folks, right? You have to balance the interests of the taxpayers and of the employees, and we do our best to do that. And, you know, that's just the way it is. So, Ms. Geiger, we'll, we'll send you newsletters stating the facts, but if you really want any facts, come, come to us. Fill out an Oprah form. I brought some in. We'll give you the, the facts as, as they exist. Okay, anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes. Oh. Yeah. Lizette does not want any more Oprahs.
Lauren Eastwood, Four Willough Drive. First of all, I would like to say that I don't consider bringing misconduct to the attention or possible misconduct to the attention of the mayor and council to be disparagement. I think that trying to cover these things up is just that, a cover-up. I think that if people are doing some of the things that were mentioned, there should be a capability. I also am concerned because we seem to have a problem on a certain half of the dais with double standards. We, three people seem to know what a conflict of interest is whenever it's used in a sentence with the phrase "council president," but don't seem to know what it is when it comes to their own selves. We also have a council member who is suing because she's not getting her Oprah request filled, but I've put in Oprah requests for her emails, and they're overdue. And I think they need to get to me. And it's not just one request, it's multiple. So I think we need to all play by the same rules, because when we don't play by the rules, it just costs the taxpayers a lot of money.
Mary O'Shea, 12 Irving Avenue. I'd just like to make a comment regarding birthdays. The senior citizens had a birthday party in September for every senior that was 90 and over. They received a birthday present. We had a cake for them. We put up balloons. We got them corsages, buttoned ears for the men, and we had a very nice time. A few of our seniors did not attend that were eligible. Lillian Fair was there. Ovid DeFury was not able to come. Andy and Rose Sakata were not able to come, but we had Florence Walcheck, we had Jeanie Perrin, we had John Steppich, we had Virginia Danzo, we had the lady that you had here that turned 100. We had her there, Ladania, Ladania. I don't know. It might have been another one or two of it, but we, we did, we did celebrate them internally in the club. And if Mrs. Geiger reads the newsletter that she gets from the club, the April newsletter did mention Ovid's birthday as 100 and Lillian Fair's birthday as 100. We do acknowledge those milestones for our seniors, and we do other things, too. We send them get well cards when they're in nursing homes or when they're in the hospital. Okay, so we try to be supportive with them. So, you know, anybody's, and Lizette puts our newsletter up on the borough website, and it's there for anybody who wants to see it. Okay? So that takes care of that. Now, regarding this correspondence from Scott Mura, I saw that in the paper. I was quite appalled. I was not appalled with him saying it. I was appalled with the actions that he represented. I was appalled to think that the police were putting up funny ha-ha signs, you know, zombies run for your lives. I mean, that's a terrible thing to do. I don't care if it was up for five minutes, a half an hour, or what. That shouldn't have been done, and it was a waste of resources and a waste of time, their time. And also, the emails with inappropriate images of women doesn't say much for how members of the police department view women and how they treat women and how they respond to women, women issues that could arise. They apparently have a, a sexual bias in that department. And I would like to know as a resident, are these allegations going to be investigated? Is there going to be an Internal Affairs? Are we going to hear about it? Because this is an example of wrongdoing in the department, and it should not be let right, because that's the problem. All these things through the years have been let right, okay? Whether it was an assault on a senior officer by another junior officer, okay, that was documented, okay, nothing happened. When materials were ordered, very expensive materials were ordered without authorization, it was let right. Everything gets let right. And I think that this council and mayor have to make an example. You've been made aware of something, and now it's up to you to act upon it. And whether, whether, I know you would have to give it to the police chief to investigate or to the prosecutor's office if it's of a higher level, I don't know. But it, it should be investigated by somebody of authority, and it should be noted, and it, and also, something should be put in the personnel files of the officers involved. Okay, just like in business, you do something wrong, it goes in your personnel file, and you come up for a review the following year, your boss goes over, over the accolades that you get from customers and the things that you did wrong. Okay? Now, the other morning, I had to call the police desk, and sometimes I wonder whether they pay attention to me or not, but I call anyway, because I am a resident, I am a taxpayer. Tried to pull out of Irving Avenue, and there apparently was some type of an event at the Japanese school. And the cars were parked on 9W all the way down to Irving Avenue, and you could not pull out of the street to make a left turn because you couldn't see the cars coming. Now, I, as we, my husband was driving, so I was able to use the cell phone. I'm driving up the highway. I called up the police desk, and I told the officer that answered, answered that the cars are parked there and it's a hazard. I don't know if I used that word, but I said, "You can't see pulling out of the street." And I said, "I believe," because I can't turn around and look to see what the sign said, "But I believe from memory, the sign says no stopping or standing, and it also says no parking to here to corner." And cars were parked beyond those signs and parked illegally. Okay, I was gone for an hour. I had to go fix my granddaughter's Easter baskets before they came home from vacation. So I was gone. When I came back, the event was over and all the cars were gone. But the officer's response to me was, "If, I'll send somebody if we have time." Excuse me, if I have time? They have time to put up zombies? They have time to say run for your lives, but they don't have time to correct a situation that could be hazardous? There's been many accidents at that corner, and it's, it's not right. Okay, that's not an answer to give a resident, if I have time, if we have time. Okay? And the other thing is, with the, you know, I'm always complaining about the cars on the street with the snow, and I know that's been in the bulletins and in the voicemails and everything, but if it snows all night, why does it have to wait for somebody to call up the desk to say the cars are parked on the street when it's been snowing for six or eight hours? And the police assumingly have gone down the street at some point, and the cars are parked there, and they don't ticket them, they don't tow them, they, they, they wait and, you know, knock on doors or whatever? And, you know, I, I shouldn't have to call as a resident to enforce a borough ordinance that they are all aware of. When it snows and the snow is on the ground, get the cars off the road. And the same way, Mark, when, when the guys are driving on the plow, they have walkie-talkies. If there's cars in the street, they should call up the desk and say, "There's three cars on Irving Avenue in front of, let's see, 12, 10, air driving Avenue."
That is the promise. We do that now, right?
And, and get them out of there.
We do, and they do.
Okay. Because when you, my husband's 75 years old, he doesn't need to shovel an extra 10 or 15 feet into the street because the plow went up the middle of the street because the cars are parked. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. To, to answer your question about, or your comment regarding the Mura complaints and any complaint I receive, and anything I see that's not right, I don't care who's making the complaint or what it's about. I'm not the judge, and I'm not the investigator. I refer all out, hoping that our system works.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, have a motion to close the other portion? One in favor? Campaign claims. Just not doing that. So basically, Resolution 18-81, March 15, 2018 through April 11, 2018, the, the claims paid were $3,301,436. And I am reading this instead of our Finance Committee chairperson because Gloria, who had been appointed, resigned, so I'm doing it. One more thing for me to do. Thanks for catching in. If there's any, if there's no other issues on that, have a motion to accept those claims and settle.
Second.
Counselperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Am I continuing? Am I continuing? Yeah.
Resolution eighteen eighty-two, approve the thirty-seventh annual Ruben Run through Englewood Cliffs, need a motion?
No.
Second. Counsel person Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Eighteen eighty-three, approval of Demerit Avenue Block Party, need a motion?
Um, point of order, ma'am, please.
Yes.
This is the same party as last year, with the same...
I think so, yes.
Okay, I'm good. No changes in the ordinance? Is it the same?
Nothing, exactly the same.
Same as last year?
Exactly the same.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Um, I need a motion.
Oh, is there a...
Thank you. Counsel person Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Eighteen eighty-four, authorized consent to assignment of contract for sanitation services. So moved.
Second.
We should probably explain that a little bit to people.
So, Miele sanitation is being sold to Interstate Waste Services from KNEC, and IWS is assuming the contract for waste haulage from Englewood Cliffs for the remainder of the term. Effective upon the closing of that.
So, they'll see different trucks now?
So, you'll see different trucks. They'll have an IWS on them instead of a Miele. Although, they may be the same ones for a while, which usually will happen.
But no change to the pickups per schedule?
Right. The services will remain unchanged.
Okay. Counsel person Zaverta?
Yes.
Thank you. E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Eighteen eighty-five, pre-authorizing action for retention of professionals? I can't hear, ma'am. A lot of noise. I'm talking over there.
To people out in the foyer, can you just have your conversations outside, please? Thank you.
Motion?
So moved. Second.
Counsel person Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Eighteen eighty-six, appointment of special litigation counsel for year twenty-eighteen, Eric Bernstein and Associates, motion?
So moved. Second.
Counsel person Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
I'm gonna say...
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Eighteen eighty-seven, appointment of special litigation counsel for twenty-eighteen, Wendell and Friend?
So moved. Second.
Counsel person Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
I'm getting him to say again. I think you wanna... She's fine. No, it's not every cue.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes. Come on, guys.
If I remember correctly, can I have the floor, please?
Can you have the people in the foyer clear out?
You're leaving? Okay, thank you.
Hey, ma'am, I tell you why, because I've been listening to conversations, the Lord, and I wish for something to Mr. Cranjack and...
There you go, getting in trouble then, ma'am.
Unbelievable.
Bye, Maria. All right, folks, out in the foyer, please, keep it down, and I appreciate everybody trying to work with us here.
Eighteen eighty-eight, consent for geotechnical boring and analysis at Englewood Cliffs Community Building, need a motion?
So moved. Second.
What is this for? They are testing the soil outside the community building for the cell towers. No cost to the borough. We didn't order it, it's the company. You're welcome. Who seconded it?
Me.
Counsel person Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Eighteen eighty-nine, authorization redemption of tax sale lien for block six oh one, lot seventeen.
Is there the address of that?
There isn't. Actually, I was gonna tell them, yeah, there's no address. It's an empty parcel of land, small piece.
On Demerit Avenue.
Correct.
You wanna know who owns it?
It's in the resolution. And it's in Englewood, right? Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counsel person Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Woo. All the resolutions passed, ma'am.
We have a resolution to add. Would you like me to state that resolution for the council?
Pass, please.
Council, Resolution number eighteen ninety, as discussed in closed session, authorized finding of unsustained in internal investigations matter for incident of September thirteen, two oh one seven.
Point of order.
You already closed to the public, you can't... You cannot amend an agenda. You did not add it to the agenda.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay, you're gonna have to read the resolution, reopen to the public, allow comment, and then close again.
You know what, just take it off the agenda for right now.
Oh, I don't know, I don't even... I don't wanna say... Open to the public again, can't it? Yes, let's open it again.
Make the motion open to the public.
Second, the motion. I mean, you have to, you just have to. Otherwise, it'll be added whenever more September. Sorry. Okay, it's all calm.
Okay, this is a...
I don't even know what it is.
This is a motion to open to the public, which I don't wanna do right now, I'd rather just move this to the next month.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion to open to the public.
Correct.
Right. And you seconded it, so now we will vote, that's what we do.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Ed made the motion, Councilwoman O. seconded it, and we will vote, and I'm not in favor of this.
Wait, are you adding something to these? I don't know what you're adding. Yes, you're adding, you're adding. No, I was not in the room.
We're not adding it. It's not on there.
Open to the public.
It's not on there.
So, I think you have...
I'm not adding it, it's my agenda. That's it. We're not opening, we're not adding. We do it this month. Go to the ordinances.
There is a motion. Let's just take a vote.
You could open to the public, but there's nothing to open to the public about, because it's not being added to my agenda. I'm not adding it.
Then the borough... Why not? We discussed it in the closed session.
Because I control the agenda.
We were going to take a vote, you can't change it out here. It might be a violation if we don't deal with this today. You can't just do it your way, ma'am. Just 'cause you're the mayor, you just...
This is the point of the meeting where...
Point of order, he's not saying that.
This is the point of the meeting where Gloria said, "Just 'cause you're the mayor, and I'll see you next year," all this. All right, I hear you, okay, stop.
There's like...
We're gonna move on.
You have to follow these...
Point of order. Okay, hold on, point of order, point of order.
Forty-five day rule. Can you please hold on for a second, it's a forty-five day rule. Yeah, you have to do it.
Okay.
You can't.
Well, you don't have the bylaws.
I don't have to, you're a machine for medicine. Don't know why I'm...
No, that's how you ask, but I don't know.
It can't all look like that, that's all that matters. Well, I understand. Here, okay.
All right, you know what?
We want a two-minute, five-minute recess to discuss. That's fine.
Right now, there's not... Right now, there's nothing on the agenda for eighteen ninety.
Well, if you're not adding to the agenda, then you don't have to reopen.
Then we're not gonna reopen.
You're not set to decide if you're adding or not.
All right, point of order then. No, I have a question for Ann Marie. Ann Marie, isn't there a forty-five day rule?
Hold on a second. Say it again. So, what are you saying? I make the motion for a five-minute recess.
Well, I just had a question.
Yes. There is a forty-five day rule, but only if you're proceeding with the matter.
Okay, so it doesn't apply in this case?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, let's just move on to ordinances. Two thousand and eight...
I'm sorry, but there was a motion and a second to open.
You can't open, so it's not...
There's no... There's nothing to open to. We didn't add anything to the agenda.
But why would you wanna add it to the agenda?
Because it's not on the agenda now, and I don't think we're doing it the right way, so we're gonna look at it for the next meeting.
Do you want to take back the motion?
I make the motion for a five-minute recess.
I second.
Thank you. Five-minute recess. Can I go look at my... We can go look at the bylaws. We have an opportunity to look at the bylaws.
Go ahead, all in favor?
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
All right, we're at a recess. Do you have a motion to go to closed session?
No, you have the motion to open.
Open what?
Oh, yeah? Let me open this comeback. Oh, you were?
I just did.
Go into closed.
Do you have a motion to go into closed?
So moved.
Second.
O. and Woo, counsel person Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
N. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
You have to read the closed session.
Have a motion to come out of closed session, please?
So moved. Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Counsel.
Hold on, so, just so I can inform the public and the council members. We had a closed session, we wanted to add a resolution as a result of the closed session, but it does involve an employee, and there is a potential rice notice that is required. He did get a rice notice for tonight, but the resolution that we are going to adopt is not on the agenda. It's my recommendation that we carry it to the next meeting, and hopefully, it'll be a special meeting that we can deal with. There is no deadline for us to make this decision, and I ask that you hold it over until the next meeting. It's the safest course to go in light of rice notice. Okay. It's not on the agenda, that's... You know...
All right, we'll settle, just do the ordinances. Two thousand and eighteen, public hearing. Ordinance eighteen zero-two, amending the code of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs with regard to Police Department Table of Organization and Removal of Deputy Chief Position. This is a public hearing, so I need to have a motion.
Second.
Motion to open to the public. Okay? Right. One in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anyone from the public wishing to be heard on ordinance eighteen dash zero-two, please raise your hand, wait for me to recognize you, come to the microphone, state your name and address. Anybody? Yes.
Lynn Norton, Nine Willow Drive. In looking at this ordinance, it appears that we're putting in one chief of police, two captains, six lieutenants, five sergeants, twelve up to, anywhere up to that number. But since we've heard, and ma'am, you can verify if this is actually true, that Mr. Muir is sitting home collecting his salary, not working as a captain, if we can verify that that is indeed true, I don't know if anyone can say yes or no to that, then you're actually gonna be in violation of your own policy if you adopt this, because he will be captain number three, and this policy says two captains, so therefore, if you vote to approve this tonight, you are in violation of your own policy.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
Eleven, Seattle, Twenty Door Drive. Can we just, someone comment on it? I mean, are we changing that? Is it presently the bylaw, say two captains? That's what it is right now?
Yes.
So, we're not changing that?
No.
So, do we have three captains?
Yes.
I hear from the audience, I'd like to get it from our government body. Do we have three captains presently on the force?
Just explain it to the... Mr. Muir has a captain designation for a period of two years from when the settlement was made, and it's in... He's receiving the captain's salary part of the settlement. But he is...
So, can you tell me...
He's not on active duty, he is out on disability, he's using his accumulated time, last I knew, and he is applied for a disability retirement. So, he's in a stage of transitioning between active duty and retirement.
Well, I'm gonna take that as this isn't the Twilight Zone, and this really means that, yes, we have three captains, that's in violation of the contract right now.
Is that what you're trying to say?
That's what I'm asking.
In violation of the contract?
Well, I'm just saying, if we have... You're telling me that right now, a table of organization says we should only have two captains? And I'm just asking.
This ordinance, I understand, this ordinance was reviewed by the chief, and the chief provided the information, and the borough administrator reviewed it and made some recommendations for an increase on a particular section here, and that's the way this was written. So, my understanding is, this is okay according to the CBA that you're saying here.
Moreover, our labor council also...
The labor council...
Prepared this to care of this.
But you're saying we're not changing... You're saying that we're making changes to this...
We increased...
But we didn't change anything with regard to how many captains...
Correct.
Are in the table of organization as we sit here tonight.
Correct.
But we're paying for three captains as we sit here tonight.
But that was as a result of the settlement.
We're paying under a settlement, a captain's salary. Okay, point of...
So, is he not a captain, or is he a lieutenant? Or I... That's why I understand what you're saying, and it seems like semantics, but I just wanna understand.
It's a man.
He's captain in name only, he's not working, he doesn't count against this number here. That's what I've been advised by labor council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
So my understanding is this is okay according to the CBA that you're saying here.
Moreover, our labor council also prepared this.
Labor council?
But you're saying we're not changing, you're saying that we're making changes to this?
We increased...
But we didn't change anything with regard to how many captains?
Correct.
Are in the table of organization as we sit here tonight?
Correct.
But we're paying for three captains as we sit here tonight?
That was as a result of the settlement.
We're paying under a settlement, a captain's salary.
Okay. So is he not a captain or is he a lieutenant? Or I, I, that's why I understand what you're saying and it seems like semantics, but I just want to understand.
He's captain in name only. He's not working. He doesn't count against this number here. That's what I've been advised by labor council.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Point of order?
Yes.
Point of order?
To who?
Can I be recognized?
Ah, yes.
Um, I just have a question for Anne Marie because she just said...
Hold on a second. Can you guys just clear the doorway, please? It's a fire hazard. Thank you.
Did you just say we're paying Captain Mura two years of a captain's pay after the settlement agreement?
No, under the settlement. Under the settlement.
So two years starting when to when?
You'd have to look at the agreement. I know you have a copy of the Giasford recently.
Yeah.
That was that, I'm sorry. That was that, I'm sorry. I'd have to look back at it. It fixes the dates when he received that salary.
Is that, so it's current?
I, I, you know, I don't know.
You just said he's currently receiving captain's salary.
I believe he is receiving. Under the settlement, he was, he was to have two years of pay under the settlement.
But that's not what we discussed.
Sure it is. It was, that was part of the original agreement. I'm not here to debate the terms as, and the differences between what Ms. Biker said and what the chief said in an email to me and all this stuff.
I don't know about that. I'm just saying what we discussed in there, that was not what we discussed.
What, eight months ago?
Yeah.
Ten months ago?
I think I have notes somewhere.
I understand and I know that the settlement agreement was first done at one meeting and then done at another and everyone has the agreement, so it's not a secret.
But you never showed the agreement before we approved it?
That's not true.
That's not true.
You've had it. If you didn't read it, tell us you didn't read it, but don't tell us that you didn't have it.
I will search for it. I'm...
Okay, we voted, if you recall, we voted based upon a lengthy closed session and me coming out and orally stating concerns of the settlement.
Correct.
And then about two months later, the written agreement was done among all the attorneys, not just me. Now, all the attorneys looked at it, approved it, signed it off, including the chief's counsel. And then you guys had it and you guys approved it.
So when we, when we came back out of closed session and you discussed what was, what we agreed to?
Yeah.
Was that part of that discussion?
That was on the table from the meetings even back in whenever they were. I'm sorry. That, yes, that was on the table. So there should have been a discussion of that, at that meeting. And I am, I don't have my notes here or my records to look at it.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to look at the...
We can certainly go over this.
Well, he hasn't been...
Because I know you didn't, I know you did in Oprah and like some things I don't even know what you're talking about, but anyway, we'll look at it. Like you said, Anne Marie Rizzuto certification, I'm not involved in this litigation at all. I haven't handled it. Okay?
All right. We're going back to the public. We're going, we're going back to the public, yes.
Oh, okay. Are we, where are we? On this ordinance? Okay. Forgot. We went on the detour.
I just have a quick question. So Deborah Sabari, 106 Hollywood. So Mura was a lieutenant before this, this settlement, so I'm assuming, let's say, he was a lieutenant as far as before this ordinance. It would have been seven lieutenants. So now it's six. So does that take away a promotion to lieutenant from sergeant in what we're doing here?
We're not, we're not discussing that. We're not discussing that. There's Oprah forms right there. If you want, fill one out and we'll get you an answer.
But aren't we, aren't you guys voting on an ordinance about how many positions we're going to have? So you've basically taken away...
You can state your opinion, but it's not an answer and question, question and answer session here.
So then why have a public hearing if you're not going to...
But you can state your comment, that's why.
I'm just asking a question. Did we take away a lieutenant's position? That's it.
We had the...
And honestly, if nobody on the dais knows the answer, then how, shame on you for voting.
You have the document.
Well, no. I don't have the, the document I have says six lieutenants.
Yeah.
You have all the council members, right? So you have seven with Mura.
All the council members received a red line showing...
So now it's six.
All the council members received a red line showing it.
Okay. Well, you're voting on it.
Anybody else wishing to be heard?
I want a detective lieutenant from Englewood Cliff's Police Department. So yeah, we're looking at this table of organization and we're just asking you maybe to retable this or this, this is, like they stated that there was only seven lieutenants. Lieutenant Mura got promoted to captain, which to tell you the truth, I didn't even see that or know that. I heard about it, but I didn't know about it. I didn't, I didn't know about it. But I'm just asking maybe to retable this until we figure out what the, what the proper table is and where we were and where, you know. It seems like nobody has the right answer. Unless you want to promote him, have three captains, that's fine. That's always...
I think the table is clear. It says up to one chief, up to two captains, up to six lieutenants.
Okay.
Up to five sergeants and up to 12 patrol persons, a total of up to 26 to run office.
Right. Understand that. But the table was, when Lieutenant Mura was here, was the chief. And I understand we got rid of the deputy chief position.
Yeah.
We had two captains, we had seven lieutenants and five sergeants. So now we're removing, we're losing a position.
You could look at it that way or you could look at it...
Mayor, point of order.
Yes.
I just, I understand what the lieutenant is saying. It would be my recommendation to table this for a month. I believe when the attorney is saying that he got this, he got this from the chief police, it could have been just a mistake because of one moving off and the other. So I would recommend table this for a month and just get that clarification. If there's nothing to commit at this point, but I would...
Well, what's not clear about it?
Because...
This is where we end up, okay? We've been working on this for six months. People on this dais, you need to read this when it comes out to you and not here, okay? This is not the time for this. We've been going, we have to get things done, folks. We have to move on. This is the table. What do you want to change, Mr. McMorro?
I don't change anything. I make the motion to table this. I get that motion.
Well, that's fine. You guys are not accomplishing what you should be accomplishing. When you get emails, you need to read them, folks, okay?
But it's got to be correct.
It is correct. There's nothing wrong with this, Alan. You just don't read things until you get here. It's aggravating because we have to do other things also.
The thing with the captain would need to be just...
The thing with the captain is clear. There's two. There's two. Mura doesn't count against this number.
Absolutely does not and I understand that.
So what is the issue?
Six lieutenants.
So that's the way we wanted it. We wanted six. This is what the chief recommended to us as well. So what's not clear about it? William and I sat in those meetings.
I understand.
We did this. We did this.
This is from the chief.
Point of order, Mayor. Can I have a question?
Yes.
What would be the downside of me doing this to this matter?
Because we don't accomplish things from one month to another. Because no one reads anything till we sit up here and you're not going, you're not, right, exactly. You're not going to read anything till the next month anyway, so we might as well just do it tonight because you're not going to read anything between now and then.
Well, it seems to me that there's a pattern here that we...
The only pattern, the only pattern there is...
The right way.
Well, here's the pattern. You get emails and you don't read them, right? And then somebody comes up here and tells us they have a question and now you're reading it. Read it in between. I don't hear from you people in between meetings.
The idea is to listen to the public too, that's why.
We are listening. That's why we amended the promotion policy to the chief.
Well, there's a motion on the floor. What's the harm of putting it over like we put the other add-on?
Look, because you guys have to accomplish things. That's what you got voted for, okay? You also got voted, you got voted into office to read your emails, to spend time doing your jobs, okay? Do them.
Let's take care of it.
Do them. It's disgraceful. Every month you guys want to table stuff. Let's get things done, all right?
I agree.
I agree you should read things, right? Good, so read them. I don't, I'm not in favor of tabling this because we, it's very clear.
Mayor, there's a motion on the floor from Council President McMorro to table 18-02.
And there was a second from Ellen Gloria.
May I take a roll call?
You can take a roll call if you want.
No, it's not that I want, I have to.
You can.
Councilperson Zavversa?
That's the table.
E. Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
And Park?
No.
Who?
No.
It passes Mayor 4-2. It's tabled until the next meeting.
All right, folks. Another month, nothing gets done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close? Second. On favor?
Aye. Want a water, man?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion at 18-90 to be agenda because I want to get something done.
1891.
Is that what number is?
Yeah, now it's...
Thank you.
Well, we just went through this.
18...
Did you just, wait, hold on a second. We just recommended that we needed to Rice the individual involved.
Mr. Mura.
Are you his lawyer now also or just his spokesperson?
Motion on the floor.
I, I do not support bringing this onto the agenda, folks.
We want to get stuff done, Mayor. Right.
I second the motion.
Thanks, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So, so I'm just, I'm just going to repeat, there is a Rice notice for tonight, but this resolution was not on the agenda and the chief, who usually attends when he has a Rice notice and knows we're going to talk about it, is usually here. He's not here. I recommend we hold off on this matter until the next meeting.
There's a motion, please.
I understand.
Counsel.
Okay. This is to add?
There's a point of order. Hold on a second. Yes. What is it?
I just want to address Councilman Zavversa. Everyone knows that I am recused on matters involving the chief of police. My, my statement is more of a procedural, okay? I'm not saying to blame any particular person, but it's concerning for me in regards to a Rice notice.
You are being advised, I mean, I'm going to recuse on this, but procedurally, if you're being advised on any matter that any employee did not get a proper Rice notice, you probably should not be acting on that.
Can you clear the doorway, please?
I can only, like, again, that's, that's a statement from a procedural standpoint. You should be tabling that. If the attorney is telling you that an employee didn't receive a Rice notice properly, you could be opening yourself up to another lawsuit. We do have a count on an improper Rice notice being issued already in one of the lawsuits. I'm just letting you know.
I thought, but Anne Marie did say that she, he's been Rice.
No, she said not properly, though. That's what I just heard her say.
He's been Rice. He was told there would be a close. He was told that the matter would come onto, any official action would be taken in public. He was told that in the Rice notice. However, if he looked on the website at the agenda, it's not on there. That was my point. It's not on there. So is he entitled to a new Rice notice and have it the next time? There's no law or case that's going to tell you yes or no. So my recommendation is to be safe and not violate someone's quote-unquote Rice notices. We should do it next month. That's what we're the next special meeting because we know we're going to have special meetings. We don't have to wait too long. We only have to give a few days Rice notice. That's my recommendation because Rice, people get all upset about Rice. There's a lot of case law about it. There isn't going to be a case, case addressing this particular point. There's no right or wrong here. The recommendation is based upon conservative recommendation. Don't do it now, do it in a few weeks. That's my recommendation. So if you want to vote on the motion, go ahead.
I have to. The motion goes on.
Mayor, can I take a roll call?
You can make a motion to table it.
You can withdraw it.
I can make a motion to withdraw.
I withdraw.
You can withdraw it if you want.
I'm not.
All right, good. So you're going against advice of council?
No, I'm taking her advice.
She's telling you to withdraw.
That was the, the go forward.
She's telling you, right...
This is to you, Mayor. We want to get stuff done because that's...
She's telling, she's telling you to, thank you, Ed. She's telling you right now to not do this, but you're doing it. Go ahead, do it.
I said the same thing in closed.
Councilperson Zavversa to add the resolution.
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro?
Recused.
And Park?
No.
Who?
No.
Okay, now we have to open to the public.
Make a motion to open to the public.
Second.
Uh, hold on.
On favor?
Aye.
Right.
I will announce it.
So how are you going to deal with this when it, when somebody gets up here and asks you, right? When somebody asks you, what is this about?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead. You got your hand up?
Hold on, let me, do I have more? Hold on a second. Do I need to announce the resolution?
Yes. Read the resolution.
Okay.
And it's a, it's a result of what was discussed in the session.
Resolution number 1891. Authorized finding of unsustained in internal affairs matter for incident of September 13, 2017, as discussed in closed session at length with the labor attorney, borough labor attorney present and all council members and myself present. So you can ask questions, but this is about an IA matter.
I'm going to recuse from the dais.
Okay. And she was recused from closed session too, so.
So can you tell me, Glenn, this is 12th Glory Drive. Can you tell me what that actually means, what you're saying that?
No.
So you can't say anything?
What I can tell you...
What was not found?
No. I can't, I'm not going to talk about it.
Can anybody tell us? None can talk about it?
Nope.
But, so what's, what are we voting on?
They know what we're voting on. It's discussed in closed session.
And we're not allowed to know.
It is a confidential IA matter which can only be released under certain circumstances and both the target officer and the victim, if there's a victim, okay, have confidentiality rights. We're not discussing it in open public session.
So are we sustaining the charges or...
We're unsustaining the charges.
Thank you.
No. Don't do it.
Anybody else for the public? Yes.
I am just going to repeat that I have concerns about conflicts of interest and people not properly recusing and this is the way we get prerogative writs filed against the borough for which we have no insurance coverage.
Okay. Got a motion to close the public?
Go move.
Second.
On favor?
Aye. Make a motion to vote on this?
Motion. I need a second.
Anybody have a second?
Second.
Mayor, I have a vote for 1891. May I take a roll call?
Yes.
Councilperson Zavversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMorro is recused and off the dais. And Park?
No.
Who?
I don't, I don't agree we should be voting on this tonight, so I'm going to stand.
Okay. So it passes.
Passes.
Okay. Next, next ordinance is 1805. An ordinance amending ordinance number 1709 titled ordinance fixing salaries and wages and compensation for all salaried appointed and elected officers within the Borough of Englewood Cliffs in the County Bergen State of New Jersey. This is a public hearing. Got a motion to close the public?
Go move.
On favor?
Aye.
So does anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on 1805, please come up to the microphone after I recognize you? All right. Seeing and hearing no one, got a motion to close the public portion?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. Got a motion to, to approve this ordinance? Can I motion to approve this ordinance?
So move.
Second.
Can I have a roll call?
Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Mario, Mario, they've got to stop. Mario, mayor.
The guys, why don't you guys just stop? I see the back of your head, so you don't have to turn around and talk to her. Okay, okay. Time, all right, please. Maybe what we should do is, somebody move if you guys can't sit together. I don't know what else to do with this crowd. Well, they have different rules back there. They can do whatever they want.
Okay.
So ordinance is two thousand eighteen, first reading.
An ord- Okay.
Eighteen oh seven. An ordinance, oh my god, stop.
Eighteen oh seven, an ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs, chapter two dash thirteen, entitled Police Department to Establish Promotional Procedures for Position of Chief of Police. The public hearing will be May ninth. First reading. Mayor, I need a motion?
I do need a motion.
Discussion, please.
What would you like to discuss?
Uh, um, well, I spoke privately this one. If we could change it, listen, you can do it or don't, but if you change the wording on item one C to, um, preferred instead of and of or for college and military service.
So the issue is, we are, guys, come on, please. The issue is, originally we had, for promotion to chief, we had four years college, bachelor's degree. And then through some discussion with some individuals on the police department, they brought to my attention that there are there are situations where military should be counted, and I agreed. So I wanted to change it to four years college BS degree or BS or BA degree or four years of military service with an honorable discharge. Councilman Zaverta is asking that we just make that a preference and not mandatory one or the other. I don't support that, but you guys are free to kick it around. The way we pick the statute, the way we did this was based on what the prevailing standards are in other boroughs according to our labor attorney, so that's what I relied on.
And I don't disagree with the mayor. I'm just listening to-
Lieutenant Michael?
Listening to Lieutenant Hill came up a time. He also, because I think before that change of four years of service, it would have left out a couple of officers, and with that change, I think it only leaves out one of our officers that become possibility, possible candidates for chief. So I think to give everyone an opportunity and not just leave out one or two, that would cover everyone. And we can still make that preference.
Yeah, and just for the record, I did not do any analysis of who has what qualifications on our existing police department. I didn't do that. I looked at it from the borough's point of view of what's going to make us have the best chief going forward after this chief retires. So we're looking at it two different ways, which are a trial to do.
Yeah, for the record as well, I also did not look into which police officers had which qualifications. I just made sure that I wanted to look at this objectively and just think what the best policy is and in comparison to, you know, what other towns do as well.
As Lieutenant Hill said, what's wrong with opening the net a little wider to see if there's more candidates, that's all. So I'm agreeing with the police officers as usual according to the mayor, but I think in this case they're directly. That's just my opinion.
Discussion, he was discussing on eighteen oh seven.
That was a point of order, and I need a motion to approve this in the first reading as it's presented.
Actually, it's, this is the, okay.
First reading.
Yep.
We tabled the former one eighteen dash oh six. So if we added something in, you shouldn't make a substantial change and still go to the second reading. That's why this is first reading. And the other one we had last month, tabled.
So can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
It was Woo and Park?
Yes.
Councilperson Zaverta?
I think everybody knows my opinion on it, so no.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
Abstained.
McMorro?
Anyway, I'm going to roll on this quick.
General legislation, it's not particular to Chief Chiapi, that's for sure. So I don't think you have a conflict on this.
Yes. M. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next ordinance requires some explaining from our borough council. But I'll take the first shot at it. We had a public safety director ordinance passed and there's been a lot of excitement and hysteria and craziness over it, including lawsuit and arms failing and things being screened out in the lobby area that should not have been said. That said, we talked to the judge in this case and we agreed that we would work with a mediator to revise or amend and revise or amend and replace that public safety director statute with a mediator mediating, and the judge recognizes that we need some help, some support here. And so with those guidelines, we'd like to go forward and mediate a better public safety director ordinance.
Yeah.
Anything else that you want to add today?
Well, I just want to, the mayor is using the word mediation. What the court has requested and is prepared to order as to the borough and the plaintiff, Chief Chiapi, is called a special master, and there is a court rule about the special master. She's asked both sides, the borough and the mayor and council of the borough and Chief Chiapi to consent to a special master because she would like to see, her words were, "The borough is entitled to have a public safety director." The chief is entitled to have his rights under the Bill of Rights. Use the special master to try to reach an agreement on an ordinance that can then come back to the mayor and council, which hopefully will be worked out and recommended by the special master and there won't be a lawsuit. So that's the purpose of the special master. So she is entering, she has a consent order. It's circulated today. This is why it was added late because the conference was on Monday and the discussions were yesterday and the revisions and crafting were today. So she's got a consent order for remand to the mayor and council and to go ahead with the special master and probably have a revised ordinance in May. This is to repeal the existing ordinance that is the subject of the lawsuit. So that's basically it. Let me see if there's anything else I have to say. She did also say, it's clear that the borough is acting in good faith. They have an ordinance, they need the- She had some commentary at the last court hearing about the need for a PSD in Englewood Cliffs. And she also said, you know, the fact that we were attempting with the resolution suspending certain provisions showed that the borough was acting in good faith, and that's another reason why she thought the special master would help us. Because we were already established a interest in working on the ordinance with the other side. So that's where we are. So the chief's lawyer agreed, I agreed, and the court will probably enter that order and will go further. Any questions? I think we talked about this already in closed.
Emery, what's the, what's the, what's the process for agreeing on a mediator?
It's already, the court made three or four recommendations and I selected with the other attorney, we agreed on one person, a retired judge from Bergen County, who used to do prerogative writs. And as far as I know, has never been involved in any Englewood Cliffs matter before. The cost is to be shared fifty-fifty. It's not per court rule, it's fifty-fifty. And I would assume it's cheaper than having a lawsuit.
And how about the timetable?
The timetable that I put forth seems to be a bit aggressive and we're still working out the deal, the details. But my timeframe with the special master and the other side goes through about May eleventh. So that maybe we can have a new ordinance on the May, I'm sorry, May seventh, so maybe we can have a new ordinance on May eleventh. But there is really no, you know, we have to, we have to have the judge agree to the schedule too.
Thank you.
Any?
There would be a motion needed. And if we don't have a motion, then-
So move.
It's up to you guys.
You need a motion?
I'm sorry, we didn't hear.
Second.
I need a second.
Second.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
I'm going to vote on this, Emery. Listen, feel?
Yes, you voted on the original.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Passed.
Thank you. Second reading will be May ninth?
Okay. So committee report, council member report. Let's go from left to right tonight. Councilman Woo?
Sure, just a couple of things. I'll leave recreation to Carol. In terms of fire, on June twenty-third, from one to five o'clock, we have the wet down of our new fire truck. We haven't had an event like this, I assume, probably in decades, so it should be exciting. In terms of the police department, Chief Chiapi gave me a notice. The Englewood Cliffs Police Department will host the sixty-fourth Annual Fed Witty Clinic Youth T-Ball. It's going to be for four weeks, starting on April twenty-one, and run every Saturday from nine to ten o'clock in the morning. Thank all the police officers who volunteered their time to do that. I also had a good discussion with Mark, met Mark at the yard, spoke to him about, you know, potentially putting a tarp around the sort of tennis court up on Hudson Terrace with all the used police vehicles and other vehicles in there parked. We can cover that up. Also took a look at the salt shed that we have and, you know, the condition isn't great. It's in our budget. We haven't officially put in our budget yet, but I have a good idea of kind of, we definitely need some upgrades there. We also, Mark mentioned that one of our garbage trucks is in need of a wire harness repair. It's a pretty costly repair. Truck's only about three years old. Hopefully we can work out, five years old. Hopefully we can work out a deal with the dealer to get a good price on that. Lastly, interviewed five borough administrators. We're going to continue the interviewing process next week and hopefully we'll have a short list soon. And the last update is, we continued our labor union discussions with the police bargaining unit today. It was our third meeting to discuss our union contract. Thank you.
Uh, President of the Mayor, let's go on to move. We don't have a meeting. We didn't have it. Tomorrow we have a meeting scheduled, but Mr. David Wilson, the body tonight, about the President of the Row. Those kind of any complaints he has, anybody have it? Tomorrow, tomorrow, seven thirty, he was actually saying, you know, place in here, we have a meeting. Please come out and speak up. You know, then, you know, President, the chairman will explain about what's the problem. So come out tomorrow night. That's it. Thank you.
Um, thank you. Um, hang on, hold on, Fred, okay. Um, recreation, we had our Easter egg hunt. It was a great success. I thank everybody on the council and the volunteers from our residents that came out to help. We had a petting zoo this year. We had face painting and we had balloon, I don't know what you, what do you call it when they make the balloons for the kids? Balloon animals, yeah, they had, they had a good, there were three choices and the kids had a great time. They loved the petting zoo. There was the goat with the one horn, the one-
The unicorn.
The unicorn. Yeah, it was, it was really great and, you know, every year we learn from it. Hopefully in next year it'll improve again. But I've never seen that many kids as I saw this year. It's exciting to see the town growing the way it is. It's exciting to see them coming out to these events and it makes it worth it, the efforts that get put in. I appreciate the support. Other than recreation, there's Koa. I see the attorney from Baby Padivano is here. I'm very proud to say that we are working diligently and staying right on track to do everything we need to do. And that's, that's all I have to say, mayor.
Okay, yeah, so just for everybody's sake, Baby Padivano is suing the town. The law firm of the representative here is suing the county connection with the affordable housing litigation that I guess Karen Giger's teamed up with them also somehow. Go, go ahead, Gloria. Gloria, go ahead.
Transportation, so this week I've been in contact with the director of transportation for Bergen County and I've learned that there's a program that's, I don't know if they've had it in the past, but it's called the Fifty-three Ten Program where we can apply, we can make an application for a vehicle, a New Jersey transit vehicle.
A bus?
It could, yes, definitely a bus. It could be a full-size bus or it could be a, one of those mini fifteen-passenger buses.
Do we rent, do they rent it to us?
No, actually, if you make an application and if the county supports you, I think the vehicle is given to you free.
Really?
Yes, and we just have to, I have to double check the information, but the application will be coming out soon.
Okay.
And it'll be sent to the clerk. And Mr. Murphy, that's his name, Tom Murphy, he's the director. He had informed me that the borough will be responsible for the insurance, fuel and a driver. And these buses typically go for seventy-five thousand dollars, but, you know, if we put in the application in time and if they support us, we'll be able to get one.
So get us the information and the application and then we'll make sure we get it in. Yep.
That's the plan. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to invite everybody to the rabies clinic on May fifth at the community center. There'll also be animal adoption. Last year, we had a big showing, very, very cute animals. Even though I'm allergic, I went and took a bunch of pictures. They're absolutely adorable. So it's a free rabies clinic, so I hope everybody shows up on May fifth at the community center. And hours are one-thirty to four o'clock. Yeah, dogs and cats.
Ed?
I think it's all good.
Great. Excellent. One item that I want to bring out is the, a couple of residents have approached me about having a dog run at either of the parks that we have, and just want to put that out there for discussion in terms of whether or not it's a good idea, bad idea, think about it, let me know. I know they've had one in the past. The problem obviously is cleaning up after your dog. If somebody could figure out how to make people do that, that's great. You guys want to think about that and let me know next month? I don't have any old business. So if I have a motion to- Oh yeah, you know what, just for everybody's sake, you could, you're going to hear about this probably. There were, in connection with something that's going on at the prosecutor's office, we had Ellen, Ellen had called Loretta Weinberg. Loretta Weinberg called the prosecutor. She's the Senate Majority Leader. She probably shouldn't be doing that. Ellen called the prosecutor. She probably shouldn't be doing that. So people on the dais, just understand what your role is.
Sure.
You're not investigators, you're not judges, you're not prosecutors. You see things, you refer them, but you don't get involved in investigations because it's just not right. It taints things, and I'm not sure why Senator Weinberg would get involved in Englewood Cliffs, but we're going to find out. I'll let you know.
Okay, point of order?
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Point of order?
Point of order.
Sorry, what do you want?
Okay. I just wanted to clarify something because it seems that even in our ordinance, ordinance today, twenty eighteen dash oh seven, number three O, it mentions on the ordinance, "The appropriate authority shall promote the candidate that demonstrate the greatest overall strength in consideration of the items set forth herein. The appropriate authority or its designee shall review all the following elements in the selection process." There seems to be some confusion as to who the appropriate authority is. And just to clear it up, we don't have any issues going forward because I think that was part of the reason at the last meeting was that we, not me, but it seems that some of the people on the dais had some confusion as to what the appropriate, who the appropriate authority is.
Could you put this as a context for everybody?
Sure.
We cut this close in confidential information, please.
Yeah, so last, so the last meeting, Mr. Rudeman was here and he said, basically, as far as the IA investigation, that the appropriate authority was allowed to review it under Lizette Duffy's control, right? It's on the video that he had said that, and then Emery disagreed and said, no.
And he went through the four sections of the Attorney General Guideline and agreed at that time, none of them apply.
Right, but that doesn't apply because it's still supposed to be the appropriate authority. So chapter two of our municipal code, section three subsection, part three, says designation of appropriate authority. The mayor and council of Borough of Englewood Cliffs shall be designated as the appropriate authority as provided in the New Jersey statutes. The appropriate authority shall be responsible for all overall performance of the police department. The appropriate authority shall adopt and promulgate rules and regulations for the government of the police department and for the discipline of its members. The mayor and council shall have exclusive right to preside and adjudicate all matters in regard to any hearings held pursuant to NJSA forty A, semicolon, fourteen dash one four eight. So it's clear in our municipal code that the appropriate authority is mayor and council. Apparently, it's also in our new ordinance today, but as of last month, it seems that we were not the appropriate authority. So I just wanted to clear that up.
I don't think anyone ever said that.
Okay, so just so you know, there are about five other code sections and three or four other ordinances that also come into play. The appropriate authority changes based upon the matter under consideration and the type of thing that is sought to be done. It's clear in the statutes- It's clear in the statutes, and as a matter of fact, I just had a judge say it in one of the Englewood Cliffs cases a few weeks ago. So, I mean, there are other statutes, and there are other codes. The appropriate authority, when the VCPO sent this matter back, is in fact the mayor and council, in this instance. There are other instances where the appropriate authority can be the borough administrator and can be the mayor as the chief executive officer of the borough.
So, Emery, just moving forward, all police matters, the appropriate authority is the mayor and council, correct?
Not for me. No, I'm not.
That's not what she said.
But that's what the code says.
But you do need to, and the code refers to a statute, and there is a statute.
But it's under the police department, yes, the statute, the code.
I, I understand. I'm not going to, I'm not going to, I'm not gonna debate this, because we're talking about a matter, we're talking about.
That as a, no, I'm.
I mean, you're asking me as a general, and you're asking me in general, and I'm saying to you, there is no definitive general. There isn't, there is no definitive. It varies from circumstance to circumstance. In this matter, the appropriate authority is in fact the mayor and council. That's why you all went in to close, and that's why you all voted.
Okay, and what about the ordinance that we just, that we just voted on? Is that, who's the appropriate authority for ordinance twenty eighteen dash oh seven?
Uh, what is the ordinance you're talking about? We just did two. It will, it will be. Promotion. It will be. It will probably be your personnel committee first, committee first, and then you.
Hold on, everybody. What is your point, though? What are you trying to prove here or not prove? What do you like?
I just proved that she said it's the appropriate authority is mayor and council.
But in a specific instance, like, what, what are you talking about?
The fact that you would not allow us to review the IA?
That's not true. That's not true.
It is true.
Not true.
You get, you have to, like, you have to separate what your feelings are from reality, okay?
You know what, everybody saw at the last meeting what went down, so that's all I have to say.
What went down is, is, uh, not, not exactly how you should refer to it.
You should read your emails more carefully.
All right, all right, so everybody promised me that you're gonna read your emails.